It's 2:04 PM. My name is Time Minister Chair of the Board. Commissioner and Vice Chair Gary Edwards is excused. We have Commissioner Carolina Mejia, our County Manager Mira Chavez, our Economic Development Manager Jenica Machado, and Michael Cade from the Economic Development Council here to discuss with us a topic on the Economic Development District. Informational, we have till 3:00 PM. Public can follow along on our YouTube channel through livestream or by conference call at 3602529020. The PIN is 1234. Who's kicking off, Mira?
Yeah, thank you Commissioners. You got a somewhat of a sneak peek of this morning related to this briefing. Michael Cade is going to dive in in more detail related to the opportunity for Thurston County to join an economic development district. And I'm sure there will be a lot of conversation related to that and maybe opportunities ahead and challenges as well. Jenica, would you like to step in?
First down, Mira, is really garbled.
Can you hear me? No?
I can hear you, but there's like a lot of brushing up against something.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yeah, better.
Is that better?
Mike is scraping against something.
Okay, sorry. I apologize. Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, good. So what I was saying this morning, you got a sneak peek of this briefing. There's going to be this afternoon related for the opportunity that perhaps Thurston County may have to join the Economic Development Council. And Michael Cade is involved in will knowledge of this particular opportunity. So I don't know if Jenica would like to say a few words before we give the floor to you, Michael?
Yes, thank you. I would just add that, as you had heard, the addition of Thurston County into an Economic Development District is explicitly called out in the Thurston Strong 24 Month Plan, but also has been recognized before, just talking about COVID recovery, and has been a long identified strategy and tool that could be used by the EDC and Thurston County. And so, Michael Cade is the holder of knowledge on everything Economic Development Districts. So I'll turn it over to him to explain more.
Thank you, Jenica, and thank you. I have a number of slides I'll go through, but I think what I'd like to do is just spend a couple of minutes and just give you a quick preamble in really the nature of the conversation today that I'm hoping to engage you in and provide you some information with. I started my career in 1990, working for the Snohomish County Economic Development Council. And it was a wonderful opportunity for a young person to kind of get their feet wet and understand how an Economic Development Council operates. And one of my duties there was to work in the rural parts of Snohomish County. And we created a couple of very significant efforts in rural economic development. And one of the things that I was, the first project I actually worked on was a revitalization strategy for a rural community called Darrington. And Darrington is kind of at the end of the road, if you know that part of the world. Literally, the road stops. It goes no further. Thou shalt not go further unless it's on a dirt road that's passable six months of the year. So the east and northeast end of Snohomish County. And what we did is that it was a very heavily timber impacted community that had an unemployment rate of nearly triple of what the county was at that time. It was pretty phenomenal. Small town, and literally two-thirds of the town was out of work when the mill, Hampton Mills, closed. Hampton Mills since then restarted. One of the reasons why Hampton Mill restarted was the work that we did at that time to create an economic development strategy for rural Snohomish County. And we used the Economic Development District of Central Puget Sound to leverage federal dollars and federal resources into creative strategy, but also to provide the town with infrastructure dollars to upgrade their sewer system, do a variety of things. They actually created an incubator, and they had an old airfield that now is a part of a commercial incubator for that community. And I thought, wow, what a great story of rural economic development. And that didn't come out of the, the thinking came out of the EDC and the task force that we put together. But the leverage tools and the resources came out of the Central Puget Sound Economic Development District. Great example, first lesson I learned in economic development is rural-based, strong-based, community-based economic development. And we use the Economic Development District to do that work. We use their technical resources, and we also leverage their dollars, their federal dollars into that community. Very tragically, a couple of years ago, you remember the slide in Oso, in eastern Snohomish County, very decimated, awful, awful situation. If you remember that story well, and I do, happened when I was here, was that the next day, they had a Economic Development Relief Program on the ground the next day, absolutely the next day. And that came out of that work that we did in Darrington. We created that economic response from that work that we did in Darrington. And I was very, it was nice, it was unfortunately kind of a strange feeling to see such a tragic event with loss of human life and other things, but how quickly that community rallied around a plan that was in place. And the only reason why that plan was in place, well, not the only reason, but the one reason why, the big reason why that plan was in place was because of the resources of the Economic Development District. Concurrently, at that time, we realized in Thurston County in 2004, when I came here, I started casting about for resources and looking for the resources. Jenica has reported to you and discussed, an economic developer really is one of the biggest things an economic developer can do, most impactful things that we can do as economic developers, is look for tools and look for resources that we can bring to the public entities of the community that we serve, that we can bring to the private sector that we support, and that we look for the citizens and neighborhoods that look to create a sustainable and a vibrant community. And so, as we looked at our inventory of tools and resources in Thurston County, I realized there isn't an Economic Development District here. And so, that's the conversation that I want to have with you, is that we have been lacking an opportunity to fully participate with the Economic Development Administration of the federal government. They provide a lot of resources, they provide a lot of technical assistance, and they also provide funding. And economic developers were notorious of looking for funding and just putting it in, putting it on the ground that creates jobs, blah, 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 blah. But if we don't have the tool to do it, we have to figure out how to do it. It's got to come from somewhere, because work still has to be done, and the community still has to be supported. So the conversation I want to have with you today is, how do we get there? Why aren't we there is not really the question, but how do we get there, because it is important. So I'm going to screen share, if that's okay with you. I think I have the ability to do that. Screen share to, and then, please, if you want to go in a different direction, please stop me. We have quite a bit of time to have conversation, but please stop me and we'll go in a direction. But again, the topic that I want to talk to you about is a resource and a tool that we want to put into not necessarily just the EDC's hip pocket, but your back pocket as well, and Jenica's back pocket, so we can start thinking about economic development in a different way about federal government. So what is an Economic Development District? It can be, you know, it's found, it's found in the Code of Federal Regulations, they're cited the title of the chapter and the part. It's crazy enough, if you look back in 1965, it was established in 1965, and I find this language to be wonderful. And it's a good reminder of why we do economic development. And I thought, man, these people, the people that wrote this section didn't get enough credit for being far-reaching and far-thinking. Remember back in the 60s, economic development, as I've talked to you before, was little about chasing smokestacks, right? We're going to go out and get big business and life's going to be good. But they wrote, "The EDA in '65 fulfilled mission of fostering entrepreneurship, innovation, and productivity through investments in infrastructure, capacity building, business development to attract private capital and better jobs." And then there's a whole section in there about sustainability, and I should have quoted it, but it goes on to quote, "Sustainability is key to the future of economic development communities." And I just think that's wonderful, because at that time, people weren't thinking about sustainability. They were just thinking about, man, we got to get jobs, and we're going to get big jobs, and it's going to be good. But the EDA at that time started looking at infrastructure and looking at sustainability and why we do it. So the EDA funds and helps, as per the chapter, through a cooperative agreement. Feasibility studies for development that would create jobs and economic development activities. That's the one I used very heavily when I was doing, working in Darrington, low and low, long ago, a lot of hair, several pounds ago. They provide dollars for infrastructure, roads, bridges, necessary public facilities, and that's changing. Jenica's having conversation with you about broadband as a critical piece of our infrastructure. And the idea is infrastructure as we set the pace for the future of job creation, job retention, job resiliency, community resiliency in the future, and then other public facility that lead to sustainable job growth retention. And that's a quote right out of that chapter, "Sustainable Job Growth Retention." And I think that's wonderful, because it's not just about a job for job's sake. It's about a job that leads to a sustainable community, that leads to a quality life that we envision and appreciate. So I want to talk a little bit about our relationship and where we are right now, what's the status. And this is kind of a strange thing. I remember, I went to, I used to be very involved with some other organizations, I still am throughout Washington State. And I remember going to conferences, and then there would be the Central Puget Sound Economic Development District people in one corner of the room, the Northwest Economic Development District in another room, the Southwest Washington, other part of the room, and then, you know, the Southeast and then the South, you know, the Northeast. And I'd be sitting by myself. I literally had nobody to sit with when we talked about this stuff, because they're all in regions. And as you know, I'm a big proponent of regional economic development. It is the way to build strong, a strong, solid economic development district. And we were by ourselves, and nobody was sitting there. There are two counties in Washington State, and I actually think it's up to three now, because I think one of them dropped out. But historically, there have been two counties in Washington State without an Economic Development District designation. And it is a federal designation, so let's don't belittle that point or go over too softly, because it is a federal designation. There's Walla Walla County and Thurston County. So, you know, call the folks over at Walla Walla and say, hey, you guys are part of the district. And the guy goes, nope. I talked to the Economic Development Director for the city, and he says, nope. And I said, well, you know, these were formed in the 60s and 70s. And he goes, yeah, at that time, we had the penitentiary, and we thought life was good. You know, that was our, that was our meal ticket, was the penitentiary in Walla Walla, it's federal penitentiary, jobs, investment, infrastructure, the whole complex that comes with it. They thought that was it. And I said, did you guys ever want to join an economic, he said, do you want to join us? We'll join us. Well, we can't, we got to be vigorous. We kind of laughed about it, and he says, yeah, that was our gig that we just had, we had no reason to. We never, we weren't thinking far, far, far reach. And the other one obvious is us. And so, you know, I called some folks and, you know, at the, because a district can be at a port, it can be at an Economic Development Council, it can be at a chamber, it can be at a variety of different ways. And nobody had ever really heard of it. And the only thing I could think of is that people at that time, and nothing disparaging at all about strategy development in the 70s and 60s in economic development, they're saying, you said, we're a state government. We were, state government was akin to what I heard at Walla Walla. There was no need. I mean, that was it. That was our gig. Today, we talked a little bit about, private sector now is 60% of wages earned in Thurston County versus, used to be 60% of wages earned were public sector. It's changed. So our region has changed. There is an existing Economic Development Districts that surround us. We're surrounded by Economic Development Districts. Central Puget Sound Economic Development District is Pierce, King, Kitsaps, Snohomish. It's called the Central Puget Sound Economic Development District, and it's housed at the Puget Sound Regional Council. It actually absorbed, PSRC absorbed the Central Puget Sound Economic Development District. Now it's the fiduciary and home of it, and provides the staff of it. It provides a lot of the staffing for it, very effectively. But it does those four counties. To the south, the Southwest Washington Council Governments, Lewis and Cowlets Counties. And then to the west of us is Mason, Grace Harbor, Pacific. Down the Economic Development District down in Clark County is an interesting one, because it actually goes over the Columbia River into Portland. And it's an Economic Development District, encompasses the Portland Counties, as well as Clark and Skamania Counties, I believe. So we're surrounded by Economic Development Districts, but therein lies, we don't have a dance partner. Which is fine, you know, but I think we're blessed for it, and I go back to the notion of tools and resources that we want to have. So you started kind of casting about, and what are the issues? So, so what? So you discovered something, Cade, big deal. Good for you, right? So what's the issues of note? Singular counties cannot be an Economic Development District. You've got to have a partner, you've got to have one or more partners. And then if you want to form an Economic Development District, you can't do it on your own. You've got to be invited to create an economic development. So you've got to join one. You've got to be absorbed by another region. And then, as a result of that, of that regional cooperation, because it is about regional cooperation, regional prioritization of projects and priorities for economic community development, you have to create a what was called a Community Economic Development Strategy, SEDS. That's a planning document. And I'm not a planner, so I always kind of shudder a little bit when you think about, I got to construct in the SEDS. But we're close. We are really close to having the SEDS, and we didn't realize it. But you can't break up a district. Let's say you want to join a district, you can't go to Lewis and say, hey, leave Cowlets and join us in Mason County, and we'll be good, life will be good. Can't do that. They're not going to allow that. So you can't break up a district, but you can join a district, an existing one. And the joining counties must have some common alignment or regional commonality with established districts. And we have a couple of overlays of economic development activities. A number of years ago, I started pushing, in lieu of an Economic Development District, what we might be called the Pacific Mountain Economic Development Group, which is actually, it would have been a 501(c) something of all the Economic Development Councils that would be foundational for raising funds for projects. That didn't go very far. It went close, we did a feasibility study and did a little bit of a business plan, but we didn't get very far down the line of formalizing. But you have Pacific Mountain Workforce Development Council. As you know, I think Commissioner Mejia is a part of a consortium for pack mountain, and it serves the, serves the counties of Thurston, Lewis, Grace Harbor, Pacific, and Mason Counties. And then there's a couple of other, the health, there's a health, I'm sorry, I'm going to lose my train of thought here, but there's also a health overlay that does commonality work for common. And then I think you actually have emergency response collaborative partnering for planning as well. So there's common alignment, and we've done quite a bit of work on regional approach. And one of the reasons why 2005, 2010, we pushed and required the Pacific Mountain Workforce Development Council to do its first economic cluster analysis. They just updated it two years ago. The number one reason why the EDCs wanted to have that cluster analysis is we had to define what our regional labor shed was, or regional employment shed was. And then, to kind of list out some of the other things, so keep in mind, there's an Economic Development to the south, and there's an Economic Development District to the west. The one in south, Lewis and Cowlets, is fairly operative. I mean, they have a board, and they have partners, and they regularly do a combined SEDS. The one to the west of us is essentially defunct. It's not operating, it no longer has staff, no longer has funding. And the Economic Development Administration views it as a district held in abeyance. And so they're anxious to see it get started again. One of the things that we did to start thinking about this is Sustainable Thurston. If you remember that project through the Thurston Regional Planning Council, when was that, Commissioner Minister? I think it was five years ago, the TRPC received a pretty significant grant to do a sustainable communities, livable communities, a planning document, and a variety of things. And we inserted into the Sustainable Economic Development Chapter the notion that we needed to have an Economic Development District, because it leveraged resources. The regional workforce development, I just mentioned that pack mountain, you know, we required them to do the regional economic cluster analysis. And they've just updated for the five counties, not necessarily four counties, but the five counties. And then the Strategic Economic Alliance that we worked with consultant Jason Robertson to push through forward, that we're still pushing forward on those agenda items, that identified an Economic Development District as a, as a strategy. And then my Board of Directors, four or five years ago, I'm sorry, I didn't have a date off the top of my head. Four or five years ago, essentially directed staff, me, to put this on our annual work plan to see if we can't put together an Economic Development District in some fashion. And then the Thurston Strong, as we talked this morning, is the notion that an Economic Development District is part of our future. It's part of our sustainable resiliency, because we're not going after resources, and resources aren't coming to us because we're not part of a district. That doesn't mean we can't apply for federal dollars. We can. But it just means that those dollars are not as easy to get to. I think of the project that we're going after in Tenino is the Ag Park, Ag Industrial Innovation Business Park in Tenino. We've gone after several federal grants. The number one question they ask is, which Economic Development District are you in? We checked none. And then, if none, do this application. If so, proceed. And so, we're always kind of feeling like we're at the back end of that gene pool, so to speak, and we're swimming in the shallow end of those resources. We need to start swimming in the deep end. So what's next? So as I've mentioned, my board has asked me to start the process. And Thurston Strong is identified, it's a necessary component. And so, so what have I done? We have some choices to make, and one of the guidance and leadership that I would need to seek from you at, in some conversation, is, which district do we pursue? You know, it's hard to ask to be invited to a party when, you know, the party's in full, full swing. But you also want to make sure that when you get into a district, you have the opportunity to fully participate in its leadership. I am proposing, and the work that we've done so far, is to set up, reconstitute the COLPA, Columbia Pacific Economic Development District, which is Pacific, Grace Harbor, Mason, and Thurston, Sans, Lewis County. If they want to join, that's great. We'd love to talk to them about it. But since that is held in abeyance, and it encompasses our regional workforce, the majority of our workforce overlay with the Pacific Mountain Workforce Development Council, it only makes sense. One of the issues that we have to come up with is a governance model for a new creature, which is an Economic Development District. We have to come up with a governance model, and we have to be formally invited to participate, create a SEDS, and then submit that with governor's approval, back to the federal Economic Development Administration, and then they identify us as part of that district. They essentially redraw their federal district boundaries to include us into an existing district. So the proposal that we're pursuing, and the notion that we're pursuing, is working with Mason, Grace Harbor, and Pacific Counties to attach Thurston to that district. Couple of things that are attractive to me, and the reason why it's attractive more so than the other way. I've already talked about the Workforce Development Council as being part of that overlay in the district. But the other thing is that this one is in, this one is held in advance. They had an active one, and they essentially disbanded. The board disbanded that group three years ago. And they asked, they had some assets in the bank, they had about $4,000 of assets in the bank, and nobody wanted it. It was kind of like, it was a very kind of sad story of a death of a, of a district, really. So they called me and said, you know, you guys have been talking about an economic development, do you want to take the fiduciary responsibility of these funds? And I said, well, just one more thing to do, right? And talking with the leadership down there, and they're not really, I'm not saying that they just, just, they, they dislike the way it is. They do a couple of projects each year. That's about it. And then I spoke with the folks up at the Central Puget Sound Economic Development District. And one of my concerns there is their governance model is based on population. And we would be, uh, we're a little bit larger now than Kitsap. I think we're about ten thousand population larger than Kitsap County, but King County is the large population and they seat the, the board by the vast majority. And so if you look at their projects that they fund and prioritize, the majority of them are voted on by the board are in King County. And that's fine. I get it. It works for them. Think about uh, sound transit, um, think about their, their metro, the sewer systems that they fund, the rural park programs, the rural economic development. Uh, um, that's all done through the Central Puget Sound Economic Development District. I'm not interested in having Thurston County. Um, it would be great to join a very robust uh, district. But I'm asking us to be bolder. Um, and our economy is different than it is in King County and even in Everett. Um, it's different than it is in Pacific County, but it's not so dissimilar as it is. Uh, Thurston to Everett is not Thurston to uh, Grace Harbor. It's not the same thing. We're very similar, more similar than dissimilar. And then also I'm not interested in getting back in the line. Quite frankly, we need to be, we need to have a leadership opportunity. We need to create this thing and we need to make sure that our partners in the other three counties also have an equal hand, an equal seat at the table as we move forward and they look to uh, identify their projects of, of import. One of the mechanisms of a well-functioning economic development district is the notion that we identify rural and distressed uh, infrastructure projects and economic development projects. Uh, the board of directors, we'd have to establish a board uh, of an economic development district. And we would essentially prioritize them based upon that regional SEDS, a community economic development strategy. So there's alignment from the local areas that goes up to the alignment of the district and the projects get aligned underneath it. And the prioritization is based upon that. It's not based upon population, but the quality of life that we have. Um, what needs to happen again, so we have to be invited and we're pretty sure we're your invitation. We have to uh, do some planning where we have to stitch all of the four economic development district SEDS together. Uh, one for Mason, Grace Harbor, Pacific and Thurston. And when I said we're this close, the Thurston Strong combined with the um, Thurston Economic Alliance paper that was done, uh, strategy that was done three years ago, I've already shipped that off to the, the staff at the EDA. And they said, wow, you guys are pretty much further along than most economic development districts with this two-pronged strategy. I think if you wove it together with the other counties, you would have, um, you'd be in, you'd, you'd be a really good uh, document. So we're real close. Um, right now I'm applying for a grant, a, a policy, a, a planning grant for, to establish, um, I can't do this work, quite frankly. I don't have uh, the bandwidth right now. Um, but we would need to retain a consultant to do that, to hire those together, create a governing uh, structure, governance model, and then to finalize the documents. Our board is um, and the establishment of a district, I'm kind of over the place now, I'm sorry. But an establishment district comes with an eighty thousand dollar stipend. You'd have to apply for it, but essentially that goes for your uh, staff. Uh, and that's enough for a staff, but you're going to need some more of that. The idea is that um, the, right now for lack of a, another fiduciary, the Economic Development Council could be the fiduciary of it. I've recommended to our board that when we get there, that they look favorably upon it. And they will, I'm ninety nine point nine percent sure that they will. Um, but it could reside at the Port of Olympia. It could reside at the county, county offices. It could reside at the Thurston Regional Planning Council. Uh, we need to find a home for it. We're willing to be that home, uh, at least till it gets up and running and really uh, going huckly buck in the future. So we have opportunity, we have partners, um, and right now is the perfect time to do it. So I think I've waffled around quite a bit. Um, you know, I kind of burned through it and then I kind of got, I'm sorry, I got a little bit of uh, kind of off, off point a little bit with some of the dialogue, but that's what an economic development district is. It's a wonderful tool for economic developers, community developers to go after resources, planning tools. Um, think about the work that you're doing with Habitat Conservation Plan. That could have been an EDA uh, project. Think about the city of Rainier, no sewer district down there. This could be an awesome infrastructure project. Um, think about what's going on at Grand Mound and the rural parts of Grand Mound. Um, uh, it could be some significant opportunities for us. Right now we're missing that. So I'll stop talking. Jenica, what did I miss before we open up for questions and or comments or, or, or pointed conversation?
Um, I, I think one thing you and I had discussed that, that may be helpful to add is uh, could you say a little more about expectation on membership? Um, yeah.
Yeah, and that speaks to the governance model. You can create a membership uh, model similar to um, the Thurston Regional Planning Council where there are dues payers. Um, I'm not proposing that we create a membership model where it's dues payers. But essentially is it with you're within the district, you're a member. And we create a funding model where we build off the grants that we uh, 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 go after and, and, and are successful in securing. So that way in time that you would start building up enough cash and capital to operate this thing independently by itself. But essentially members of, would be the cities within the district, which are the four counties. Um, and then we would have, I'm sure we'd have a membership model for organizations like myself. Economic Development Councils need to be at the table. And we would be a pay-to-play uh, member. So for example, the Coal Pack used to have dues from each of the EDCs. They would put in a couple of thousand dollars a year to cover some of the overhead that they weren't covered by grant overhead. But essentially it's public, public members are overhead. And then the governance model, uh, can I talk a little bit about that, Jenica? Is that where you're leading me to? Um, the governance model, um, we, again, I don't want to do the Central Puget Sound Economic Development District model where it's more based on kind of the House of Representatives, more population, more representatives, yeah? Um, our counties that we were talking to do, are nervous about Thurston County being the, you know, the big, the big dog on the street. Um, and so we need to have a conversation about a, more of a senate model where each county has certain representatives on the board uh, of the district. Need to have, for good governance, you'd need to have somebody from the county commission on that board. You would need to have somebody from the Economic Development Council on that board. And you'd need to have a planning body on that board, somebody from the TRPC. Um, there's a council of governments down in Aberdeen that would be a great representative, county commission there and then et cetera. And then you'd probably want to have a mayor or two on that board as well. Ramiro, do you have any, uh, I know you've kind of were involved with probably the Central Puget Sound Economic Development District, but do you have any comments of any things I've missed?
Um, not necessarily, just uh, maybe just talking about the next steps, if, if that is a possibility. And I think Jenica, and you alluded to the fact a little bit in terms of what would be the um, the obligations the county in this case will take on because the proposal is to join the Coal Pack by, by ad request. And Thurston County will take the lead in terms of even the fiduciary responsible party of the, of the district. Is that correct?
Um, so.
I mean, if, 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 if Thurston County is accepted into the, into, let's say, the Coal Pack and that is approved by the federal government, obviously, right? Then is it, is it, is it your proposal for then the county to take the fiduciary responsibilities of the district? Or, or can you clarify the fiduciary responsibilities a little bit?
Yeah, um, it's my proposal that we would take on the fiduciary responsibility.
Okay, it will be the EDC. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And um, uh, you essentially invest in our organization pretty significantly each year and that would be part of our contract essentially for you, for us to use. One of our deliverables, make sure that that um, that um, EDV district is operating effectively. But we wouldn't be coming to you and say, yeah, you need to take on the fiduciary in this thing. It's another taxing district. It's not another junior taxing district. And it's not, no, it really is more representative and really more of your staff. I'm going to need Jenica to be involved in this thing. You need to have her participating fully to understand what those opportunities are. But we're not coming to you and say, uh, we're going to create this creature and you need now take this creature and you need to babysit it. No, 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 we want to do that. I think it's our responsibility to do that. I think it's effective economic development work that it needs to reside inside of an economic development. Reside over the TRPC and I've chatted with um, Mark Daly about it a little bit as well. But it needs to be held inside a um, economic, a purely economic development um, uh, environment. Um, one of the things that got away from a little bit of a postmortem at a Coal Pack was that it did get away from the economic developers. Um, and the economic developers no longer want to participate and they no longer wanted to fund it. Well, I think we need to learn that lesson is that it needs to be highly effective in securing resources for the communities in which we serve. So no. We wouldn't ask you to be the fiduciary. We wouldn't ask you to uh, fund it. Um, but we would ask you to be on the board and we would ask you to um, uh, amend Jenica, sorry Jenica, let's talk about you in front of you, amend Jenica's uh, job description to ensure that she's fully engaged as part of an economic development strategy, as would I. My job description essentially would be that. Um, we've looked at our staff, Ramiro, and our staffing. Uh, we think that we have enough capacity right now. Let's say we are bestowed an economic development district tomorrow. We have enough staffing here that I could um, lend uh, quite a bit of staff to ensure that it's done right. Um, and then we'd look to build that budget and build the organization, the platform. Um, as a fiduciary home for it.
Just, just one more thought and Commissioner Mahia has some questions. Um, I'm, I'm glad and, and, and pleased to hear the, the governance model that you're proposing is a little bit different what they, my past experience, my past life experience up, up north. Uh, because as you stated, uh, it was, it was not necessarily King County centric, it was pretty much Seattle centric. And, 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 and the members, Pierce County, Kitsap County, uh, they were just on the table, but they have no say on, on those projects. So uh, from that point of view, uh, from at least where I'm sitting, you know, the governance model that you're proposing actually makes sense.
Yeah. I'm glad to hear you say that. Um, that was my experience when I was in Snohomish. Uh, we were lucky in that um, you know, we got some rural, really rural dollars that we played with, but, I mean, yeah, it was pretty Seattle centric that, you know. All the meetings were held there and the concerns I had voiced mean uh, was, hey, I don't want the Thurston EDC taking this thing over and being, you know, just like, hey, you guys are out. And we're worried about the population of Thurston swallowing this project. We need to make sure that we're working as a team and we'll need to make sure we're working as a, as a unit. Commissioner here, you're, you're waiting patiently.
Yes, so I have a couple of comments and questions. On, you know, you asked which district do we pursue and, and you mentioned a couple of districts uh, for future, I mean, is there a map of, of the regions, of the different regions? Because it's, it's something I would like to see if possible. Just to see how they're broken up. Um, i- if that is something, you know, we're going to have to decide. I think it's, it's, it's good for us to see a map. Um, my second uh, question is in regards to um, the cities. Would the cities go into this? Uh, would it, is it just county-based? How does that work?
It's, it's, um, so it would be the county, but all the, all the stuff inside the county. So all the cities would have potential participate. Um, and as each, each part of the, this is a really good question. It's probably I'll try to, try not to go too far afield, but um, so each year, is every other year, Jenica, I think it's every two years, you have to create what is a SEDS, a Community Economic Development Strategy. That's done by county that incorporates all the priorities of the cities and the county within that county jurisdiction. They get stitched with the other county SEDS. So you have four SEDS stitched together for one. And that's, that's the art form. How you put those together with economic development strategy. So your question is, do the cities participate? Yeah. And that would be part of the participatory governance model. We'd have to have a strong conversation. Does every city get a seat at the table? No, because there's more cities, uh, there's more cities in average, uh, Grace Harbor than there are in Thurston County. There's only one city in Mason County. There's only one incorporated area in Mason County, Shelton. So you wouldn't want to do it that way, but they are part of, uh, they're part of the district. Correct. So they would ever opportunity to participate uh, with the projects that are, that are pushed out.
Thank you, Michael. Um, so we talked a little bit about the cost, but I um, I kind of want to see like, what would be the over, is there a figure for the over cost of, you know? We've talked about the benefits, about the extra additional funding the county could get. Um, but is there like a, a cost that it's going to uh, fall on the county if we go forward with this?
Cost to operate an economic development district?
Yes.
Uh, right now I'm proposing it wouldn't be.
Okay.
Uh, it would be your staff.
Okay.
So maybe you can, I hate to ask her a question with a question. Does there a cost to the county for operate, for being participating in the Pacific Mountain Workforce Development Council? I, I don't know the answer to that question. I don't think that there is. Jenica, do you know the answer? Ramiro?
No. I'm, I'm sorry, no, it, it, although they, when the commissioner said it, the commissioners are expensive. I'm just kidding.
But, but Commissioner Mahia, no, um, it's, we wouldn't send you an annual bill that says, um, oh, remember that time when I said there wouldn't be a cost? Well, there's a cost. Um, we would need to set up the governance model. Um, and I can't, you never say never, so there might be in the future. I just don't know the answer to that. But the model that we're setting up right now is that you'd use um, the resources of the fiduciary, us, to staff it. Um, and you get the stipend, the annual stipend from the federal government to operate a staff that's dedicated for it. And then if you went after a grant for sewer, it was a hundred million dollars, you would write in your overhead on top of that and then go towards that, the operation.
And my last question, it's kind of like, what's been the holdup? I mean, just from these conversations, it seems like we're the last kid to get picked up, you know, at softball. Um, so what's, what's been the holdup and what's been the delay of the county not either joining a district before this? Um, a- and why, why now? I mean, I, well, you kind of mentioned, you know, the timing is perfect now, but.
Yeah, so I brought back a lot of terrifying memories from me being in elementary school and in the back pick lines. Very well. Um, but um, so nobody really needed us, uh, quite frankly. Uh, the Cowlets, Lewis County doesn't need to add that complexity. Uh, Central Puget Sound is well-established. Um, they just, they didn't need to pick up a fifth county. Um, and then Coal Pack, uh, for all intents and purposes, it was operating. They uh, went into bayance two years ago. Uh, they disbanded their board two years ago. So we really didn't have an opportunity. My first slide was, it says you can't create your own district by yourself. It's got to be a region, right? It's got to be, it's got to be a defined region in some sort. Um, so we couldn't just go to the federal government and say, you know, create the Thurston Economic Development District. They'd say, nice try, it ain't going to happen. Um, so it's not like we were just waiting to, um, when Coal Pack disbanded, um, I just immediately kicked my mind into gear and said, we'll take it. Yeah, we'll take it. We'll, we'll play. And then we'll reconstitute it. Nothing gained, you know, nothing ventured, nothing gained. Um, and even if we don't move forward today, you know, tomorrow, you know, nothing ventured, nothing. So, and why now? Now's the time. And this has been on, so I'm going to take a little bit of uh, for that answer for this and I'll be very candid with you, just, I just haven't had time. I've known that this is a project for us for two years and I keep pushing it off the plate, pushing it off the plate, pushing it off the plate. And then when the coronavirus COVID pandemic hit, I mean, I was a hundred percent focused on that. Um, the time is now because of, um, we do have some time. We do have uh, some resources. And now it's a little bit of, yeah, we're going to miss some opportunities if we don't act now. So partly is that, no, we didn't, nobody really wanted us to be picked. Their team was full. Everybody had their jerseys filled out. And B, Kate was kind of like, yeah, I don't know. I just, I'm just, I'm really smoking weed. And then the third thing is Coal Pack disbanded. There's an opportunity. Let's take it. And then let's start asking the questions. Great question.
Hey, Michael, we, you, the priorities at the beginning seemed pretty balanced. You made a couple of references through your presentation to rural and distressed areas. And I'm just wondering about, does Thurston then sit at a disadvantage? And I'm not going to name, I'm going to, I'm not going to name a committee, but I sit on a committee with Grace Harbor and Lewis County and Thurston doesn't get much in the way of resources because we're better planned, better infrastructure, better everything. So when it comes to the needs, we're always aced out by Grace Harbor, which just seems to be falling apart. So my question is, I see that, I see what you're saying about the leadership opportunity, but is there a flip side that we're going to get aced out of a lot of projects and priority because we're, we're lumped in with counties that aren't as well-developed as us?
Yeah, it could be. Yeah, I just pragmatically, I think the answer to your question is, yeah, there's a concern on my mind. But I, I went back to the process that we undertook for the establishment, the opportunity zones. You remember that federal designation a couple of years ago? We, the governor asked EGDC to promote opportunity zones. And we looked at ourselves, we're not going to give you any, we're going to get one. We ended up with four because we demonstrated, demonstrated the need in urban areas that were distressed. I'm sitting in one here in Lacey as an opportunity zone because of the distressed part of our county. Same thing with downtown Olympia, nothing against downtown Olympia. But there's a distressed area and then Grand Mound is a, you know, with the, the, the Shalhals tribe. So I think, I think, Commissioner, I think that there's a way to look at it and then there's a way to look at it. One of my great frustrations is sitting on the PAC mountain board, same thing. You know, our unemployment rate got up to 9%, but in Grace Harbor, it was 14.5% last year. Now we're down to 6% and they're up to 10%. And so one of the issues that we've tried to, let's make sure it's an equitable distribution. So we're looking at economic development systems. We're not necessarily looking at a healthcare system or a workforce system, but a, an equitable system. Just because we have an unemployment rate of 6% doesn't mean that the delta between the 6% population of a 290,000, 300,000 greatly outweighs the 13%, just on a nominal, the 13% of a, of a 70,000 person population. So you have to look at those numbers and set up your governance model so there is a weighting of that priorities. And so it really gets down to, you're going to need a skilled facilitator and a skilled staff to run a governance model that is looking at economic development projects as pragmatic. You know, we started, been working with the Lewis County EDC director, the new one there. And, you know, we just all of a sudden hit upon the notion that, man, these are some cases that we ought to start working on together. They'll be in Thurston County, but they're going to use the population of workforce out of Lewis County. And I think that's how you need to look at it. You need to look at it with the notion that population or the geography or the economy flows back and forth across county lines. But that's, that's a concern on my mind as well. I know that when Grace Harbor recruited Overstock to SATS up Industrial Park, they're only there because of the work that we did, I'll be very candid with you. You know, we met, met with Overstock more than they did. And we demonstrated that the majority of that population of their workers potentially would come out of Thurston. But it was a regional approach to it, and so it, it works. But it's, that's, that's the question. And we need thinkers like that questions. Man, let's just don't set up a system where we're your leverage tool for all your projects and all your, 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 your answers. We need to be part of that, that as well.
Okay, well, it sounds good, Michael. Seems like a, I, I'll, I'll say that as you were talking, I was writing down questions and then you were answering them and I was scratching them off. So by the time you got to the end, I didn't have much left because you'd, you'd covered the questions that I had as you went along in terms of the strategy and the thinking of why we want to be in it at all and then why we'd want to be in the particular one that you're proposing. Makes sense to me.
Yeah, good, good. Thank you. I guess I would leave you with one last thought. And I don't mean to be arrogant about it, but it's our time. Goes back to Commissioner, his question, it's our time. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm tired of not having resources. I, I'm just tired. I've gone to the EDA and said, no, you're not part of a district, can't do it. What the heck's that all about? We work just as hard, our people are just impacted by economic downturns. You know, it's our time. So, you know, think about the Ag Park, I think about it all the time, we, we would have other resources that are available, we just can't. It's our time.
Maybe next step will be to, I'll work with Jenica and, and you, Michael, to schedule and develop on the strategy meeting. I believe that's the right, the next, right step. And that will be an opportunity to dive into the, the logistical aspects of this proposal. And I'm sure at that point, the commissioners will have many, many, many questions. So let's work on that and, yeah.
Good, thank you. Thank you for your attention. Thank you for your questions. This is a great project and we're excited to do the work.
Thank you for coming to us with it, Michael. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Jenica.